Afternoon, everyone. No, good afternoon, everyone. I need a motion to call to order.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor? Jan?
Aye.
Jay?
Aye.
Kathy?
Aye.
Laurel?
Aye.
Lindsay? Mary Lou?
Aye.
Nancy?
Yes.
Okay, to start our meeting, we're having a presentation from the folks from Bartholomew. And I think I see Kathleen.
Yeah.
We all.
Chuck is on too.
Want to.
Chuck is on.
Yeah, Chuck is here also, and we want to congratulate Kathleen on her new position VP. Yay!
Thank you. Yeah, thank you so much.
So we're gonna turn the program over to you guys.
Hey.
Okay, as of our last meeting when Kathleen couldn't make it, I quickly went through the presentation of, you know, how the account's done. And then we got into a long conversation about prudent. So we can, you know, go over the account again if you choose, or we can jump right into the discussion. I know on the agenda it said, you know, that we're gonna go over the account. So we can do whatever you wish. We can.
The latest agenda just said being on for advice because we just had that complete review.
Okay.
At the couple of meetings ago.
Okay, alright, so then we'll get right directly into the prudent investor statute. So like I had said, you know, a couple months back, the governor signed into a law that allows entities, the library towns, to now get off of, as we all know, the legal list. And we're seeing, I was in a couple of towns today, and they are choosing to go to town meeting and then start to further diversify the account. I know you guys had some discussion on whether you had to go to town meeting, or was it the board's choice? So whatever the makeup of the town and the library is, that's gonna be up to you on, you know, who makes the final decision. So that's where we're starting out from. So I can turn it over to Kathleen, and you know, she can tell you how her team envisions setting up these accounts.
Yeah, so I'll just briefly talk about it, and then we can answer any questions. But um, so, you know, at this point, as you know, the account has about twenty percent in stocks. And so those stocks are, it's a list of only twenty-two individual stocks. And so if you were to go prudent, we not only can then invest in really the whole universe of stocks, which is great from a diversification standpoint. We, you know, and I don't want to repeat if Chuck already said this, but there seems to be a misconception that the legalist stocks are, you know, safer in some way, but it's really just quite a concentrated list. And so going prudent opens us up to still, you know, still be prudent about what we invest in. We wouldn't recommend, you know, Bitcoin, for example. We still want to be prudent, but just have more ability to diversify the assets. And same thing on the bond side. So again, right now, you have about eighty percent in bonds. And even those are bound by that restrictive list. And so there are so many more opportunities outside of the Massachusetts legal list. And so not only could we diversify more within the risk parameters you already have, but we could also talk about, you know, maybe re-talk about some of the goals of the funds. I was looking, and it looks like, and please correct me, but it looks like you're not spending really this money at this point, right? So you could, in that case, take on, you know, a little more risk to help the assets grow a little bit more. I think it's been around two percent annualized return, and you could now start to target a higher return, as long as, you know, there's comfort in that, and there haven't been any changes in what the, kind of the point of the funds are. So then, at that point, we could then increase the risk. And I say, you know, that might sound, increase the risk, but you want it to grow. It's increasing the growth potential of the funds as well. And so that's, that's really the high level, how we would go about it. You know, looking at the account, you, as you know, you have individual bonds. And so one maybe method we could use is sort of wait for each bond to mature. So once we, you know, a bond matures, we have the cash, and then we can reinvest it into our kind of new prudent mandate, if that is the way that you, you all go. So I mean, there's a lot, I could get like very into the weeds in this, very technical about it, but that's kind of how we view it. It really, we would still have discretion, we, you know, would still, we manage a lot of prudent funds, I should say that as well, already. So for us, we already have an in-depth research process and and, you know, would be able to, to set up that portfolio once we got kind of the risk level established. That kind of makes a little bit of sense.
And then to that end, you know, currently, how these accounts generally work today is that you spend the income. Right? So whatever money that comes in from the bond side, whatever money that comes in from the stock dividends, now that you can diversify this portfolio to the world, you know, maybe we start to look at these accounts like a pure endowment. If I've said this already in our previous meeting, I apologize for repeating. But now we look at this, and most endowments will sit there and they take twenty rolling quarters or five years, and they look at the growth of the portfolio. So rather than just spend the cash that you receive from your securities, you actually spend the growth. And then what it does, if the market's up ten percent this year and down five, you don't have to worry about that swing. If we recall, two years ago, when bonds were paying zero to twenty-five basis points, you were, really didn't have any money to spend because of, you know, your asset allocation heavy on the fixed income side. So all of the towns and libraries and entities that we have been talking to, they're really liking the idea of treating it like an endowment. And then that way there, it allows you to really make some progress in making improvements in the library or adding programs and stuff like that, other than just having to worry about the cash. And that's how you've always, and that's how towns are currently doing it. They pay, they spend the cash. So I'll turn it back to you.
One complication we have, we have a number of funds that we can only use the interest from. That would have to be separated out.
Okay, so we've gotten, that's an extremely valid point. What we can do is gains, realized gains, and there is court precedent out there because there's other entities out there that have similar language. And we can make that work so that it all plays into the overall goal of the fund. But that is a common thing in there, and the question is, can you spend gains? Can you spend unrealized gains? In the fund that says income, what is income? So we have had a good half dozen or so entities. We've actually spoken to a couple attorneys that do trust work. So we can, we can get through that.
I think in the previous conversations we had, we talked about using ETFs, exchange traded funds.
Yeah, especially, you know, we probably would recommend that. Again, it's totally up to whatever you want to do, but at the asset level that it is, you know, we can only buy a couple of bonds at a time, just because they're, you know, ten thousand dollars or five thousand dollars each. And so we probably would, we would buy institutional share class, because, you know, the, it's, you're an institution, and so the cheapest share class of diversified mutual funds or ETFs. That would be our recommendation. But again, sometimes we have communities who, they, you know, they want to own Amazon to see Amazon specifically or something like that. And so we can accommodate that. But on both the equity and bond side, that would be our recommendation, just because of the asset level as well. I think it, it makes more sense.
So diversified mutual fund that priced all, all families, Nasdaq and Dow, Standard and Poor. What was, what is your recommendation for a good mid-step? Very successful. There's some that are far more successful than others because of their management styles. What would, what would be your top recommendations?
So our recommendation, we would probably want to have a fully diversified, meaning we would want domestic equities of a small amount and international, but we would balance it really based on, you know, we'd have large cap companies, we'd have small cap, we'd have mid-cap. Yeah, so we would, how typically our company works is, we, actually, we could send also, Chuck, maybe a sample investment policy. So we, we try to help lay out targets of each of those asset classes. So, so that would be kind of the first thing, would be to figure out what we want each target to be, what makes sense, again, from a risk perspective. But then, on our internal team, we do a lot of quantitative in-depth analysis to find the best funds in all of those spaces. So it's all different types of companies. We could send, you know, some sample fact sheets if you want, but it would probably look like a portfolio of maybe like twenty different mutual funds. Yeah, so that would be, does that kind of answer, without getting too specific?
It answers my question, yeah.
So for instance, Kathleen's team on this past year actually did an RFP process. And what they did was interview, what, three to four large cap value portfolio managers. So whereas we're not tied to any wirehouse, we can pick the best of each of those asset classes.
Excellent.
That was very successful for the company. We learned a lot in the process, and we have about five billion dollars in assets. You know, people stand up and look and say, oh, okay, it's worth going through the exercise to bid on something because they know they're gonna get a fair amount of deposits. So.
And the other, oh, yeah, sorry, Chuck.
Go ahead.
The other part of that, that we do, that we also do in the portfolio as it is now, but we would be doing more of in a prudent, you know, diversified portfolio, is rebalancing. So for example, so far this month, we had, and last month, we had our small cap fund did really well, like kind of kind of blew everybody else out of the water. And so in that instance, the team would go in and say, okay, we need to sell some of this. So sell something that did really well because now we're out of our kind of balance on the total portfolio and reinvest that somewhere else. So I just mentioned that because rebalancing is such a key part of what we do because we can't just buy a bunch of things and let them sort of ride, and then you all decide, maybe you want it to be a fifty-fifty risk profile, so fifty percent stocks, fifty percent bonds, and then all of a sudden you're eighty percent stocks and we haven't done anything about it. And so you're way out of your range, if that makes sense. I know I'm kind of going a little bit beyond the question, but we would also make sure that whatever your, your parameters were, we're in there rebalancing that as well.
Rebalancing can often be a painful process, but it's necessary.
It is, yeah, because, you know, some of them are winners, and you get excited that something's doing so well, but you have to have that, that very detached view of it, I guess.
Exactly. Yes. Our treasurer, Mary Lou, do you want to weigh in on that, Mary Lou?
Well, yeah, I mean, I, I think it sounds like, it sounds like a good plan to me. And it's, I think that, I was thrilled when I heard of the, of the new prudent investor statute because, I mean, the, the legalist was, you know, kind of keeping things very stagnant. So yeah, I'm, yeah, I think that it sounds like a really good plan.
So now, it's going to be on the town warrant for the whole town, for the town to
elect to do this with the town's trust fund, for the library trust funds. And I think our board, we have talked about taking a vote just to put it officially on record that the library wishes to do so also because the Board of Trustees controls the, the trust funds specifically for the library. And it is all of our, all of the principle is be kept for future growth, but it's the, the interest, the money that that bows off that we're looking for some growth for. But it also will be most likely spent more in the coming years because there are severe, there's a chance of severe cutbacks, budgetary cutbacks, as there is in every town. So that's, we're looking for some probably good investments unless anybody has a, we're certainly not looking for individual stocks and bonds.
Good, that, that would also be our recommendation.
That's, yeah. That's an ego issue.
I think that the legalist broadly is included in the prudent list. They're not excluded. So
Correct, yeah.
Just because we have a couple of stocks on the prior list doesn't mean, uh-oh, now we've expanded the world here, we gotta dump these stocks. You will still evaluate them based on your current criteria. So going forward, your evaluation process will still be the same. And you'll have a larger world to choose from.
Yes, you explain, I'm gonna steal how you explain that. That's exactly, you're spot on, yeah.
So we want you to explain our new world.
Well, and the thing was, if you look at chapter forty-four, fifty-four, it's there. All they did was add in one line that says, and now you can use the prudent investor statute. And it's interesting, people think that the prudent investor statute is some sort of list or anything. No, it's, it's how your decisions are being evaluated. So that if an outside person came in and looked at your portfolio in a vacuum and said, okay, would a prudent person make that same decision based off of the information that you would have had at the time? Then it's okay. So you are a hundred percent correct. You can stay with the legalist, stay, keep one, two, three stocks, all of them. It's just giving you more diversification to, you know, invest elsewhere.
So one of the outstanding questions I think we still have, we recently changed our allocation for the percentage on stocks and equities. And I don't know if your recommendation is that we look at this again with this change.
Yeah, I mean, Chuck, you can talk about this too. I, I would, I mean, it sounds like, from what I'm gathering, you, you want this to grow, especially if you're gonna start utilizing it a little bit more, you have to at least keep up with inflation, right, which is impossible right now, but hopefully, you know, moving forward, it'll make more sense. So I, I think, again, it's a comfort level thing, but I think you definitely, definitely could, could increase the equity. And, and I'll also say, we could do that incrementally. So it doesn't have to be, you decide to go prudent, and then all of a sudden, we're adding thirty percent more, I'm just making up numbers, but thirty percent more of equity tomorrow, we could do it on a quarterly basis or some sort of schedule, you know, as well. So it's all customizable. If you agree, Chuck.
And to Kathleen's point, I agree. You know, you would limit, because of the concentration of the legalist, you pretty much, you know, one quarter of it are drug companies. I mean, it's highly concentrated. So you're not gonna want to have a fifty-fifty or sixty-forty asset allocation, that kind of concentration. Well, now, because you can invest in anything, well, now that, that's a better recommendation, right? Now you should change the asset allocation because you're relieving yourself of that concentration risk.
And what we increased stock wise was extremely a very low percentage.
Anyone else have questions?
Wait till town meeting, maybe? Do we wait till town meeting?
Yeah, the question is, do we wait for town meeting to vote, or do you want to vote now?
I think we could take a vote now, and then we'd be ready to go.
Okay. Someone make a motion?
Make a vote.
I make the motion.
Right.
I'm sorry, did Laurel have a question?
Oh, I was, I was making a motion.
Okay.
What's the motion?
The wording would be, I make a motion to change from the legalist to the prudent investor statute.
I.
We can do it separate.
Yeah, we can do it separate. They don't have that.
Second?
Laurel seconded my motion.
Laurel seconded.
Okay. Jan?
Aye.
Jay?
Aye.
Kathy?
Aye.
Laurel?
Aye.
Mary Lou?
Aye.
Nancy?
Yes.
Bob, yes. It's a done deal.
Yeah, super. Good job, good choice. You're not alone. You're not alone in this day.
No, no, thanks.
You're not alone.
Okay.
We don't want to tie you guys up, so if you want to, adios, it's up to you.
Thank you. Have a great weekend, guys.
Thank you for coming, both of you.
Of course, anytime, thank you.
Mary Lou?
Oh, yes. Okay, I don't have much of anything. I did send you the monthly report from Bartholomew, and everybody should have gotten that. I think I sent it yesterday.
Yeah.
Yeah, we have it.
I, I, I have a question, though. Does anybody know that they got the one from last month? I was in California. Think I sent it to you all. I didn't have it. Yeah, okay, so I just have to print it for myself then. Okay. The thing was, I couldn't print it, so I've got, I've got to go back and get it and print it for myself. But I just wanted to make sure I had sent it to you all. Okay. So I'll do that, and, all right, so I'm, that's all I have, unless anybody has any questions.
Thank you, Mary Lou.
Yeah.
Thank you, Mary Lou.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, our next topic is review of the minutes. And the first one is the minutes from January tenth, which we postponed in February because of the scheduling.
They all appear to be in order to me. I move to approve the minutes of January tenth.
I second it with a correction.
It's just a, it's Mary Lou Dempsey.
Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah.
Which is not either.
Yeah. I, I, I sent that, so I'm not sure if I sent the corrected one to you.
Oh, okay.
I'll take a note that, that, yeah. All right.
Thank you.
Yeah, no problem. I just wanted to, we have a new trustee, you know?
Okay, motion to approve? Anyone?
For the January tenth?
I made the motion.
Second.
Okay, Jan?
I.
Jay?
Aye.
Kathy?
Aye.
Laurel?
Aye.
Mary Lou?
Aye.
Nancy?
Yes.
Bob, yes. Okay, what's the next one? The fourteen?
The eight. Two, eight.
No, no, we're not doing the eight.
We're not doing the eight. Why aren't we doing the eight?
Because that's the executive session that we said we would do in April.
April?
Because we got a three-month time window to review that.
But if it's done and it's finished, why not approve it?
Okay, everyone has a copy, right?
I sent that around, I believe.
Yep.
You did, Nancy.
Any questions? Motion to approve?
I make the motion to approve the minutes of February eighth.
Second?
I seconded. Okay.
Mary Lou seconded.
All those in favor, Jan?
Aye.
Jay?
Aye.
Kathy?
Aye.
Laurel?
Aye.
Mary Lou?
Aye.
Nancy?
Aye.
Bob, yes. Okay. The next one up is March sixth.
Uh, two fourteen.
The fourteen, yeah.
There you go.
We're getting a margin.
We'll get there.
Oh, there it is.
Okay.
We have March, do you have March six?
Yeah, we do.
Any questions?
Did I have some large thing?
Yes, you did.
Yeah.
Oops, I said, I did look for it. I just, um, well, this is the fourteen, the team, yeah. It was just one omission that I think we should include that Kathy had stated that a resigned individual could reapply for the job. And I didn't see that in the minutes.
Oh, okay.
So I think that should be added. And Bergen's name has an E-N at the end, not an I-N.
Sorry?
Bergen's name is an E-N at the end, not I-N on the big list of people.
Oh, I see.
Yeah.
Just.
Yeah.
Okay, motion to approve, we change?
I make the motion to approve.
Okay, Jan seconds. All those in favor, Jan?
Take the names, copy paste.
Jay?
I was absent from that meeting, so I think I need to abstain.
Yep.
Okay, Kathy?
Yes.
Laurel?
Yes.
Mary Lou?
Yes.
Nancy?
Yes.
Bob, yes. Okay, last one. March six. Any questions, changes?
I don't know what it is. Does anyone have it on yet? I can't. Do I take a look at the other law? Yeah. Did it come with the other thing? I didn't have it where it says minutes. I beg to leave this already. Yeah, it was sent yesterday. It's probably, what was it called?
Because I have two copies of it right here in front of me, and I don't know how I have two copies of it.
It might not have been called.
No. I just, like I say, I just don't know why I have two of them, but I do.
It should be from me, right? So.
Yeah.
Well, let me, I'm on the phone.
Okay.
I'm sorry. No. Thank you, of course.
Okay.
I make a motion to approve the minutes of March sixth.
Six.
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 Right.
Second?
Second.
And Jan?
Aye.
Jay?
I also need to abstain from that meeting.
Okay, Kathy?
Aye.
Laurel?
Yes.
Mary Lou?
Yes.
Nancy?
Yes.
Bob, yes.
I found it. Oh, my goodness.
Wow, for the big one.
Okay.
What did we do?
Wow, okay.
One of the, very nice job, by the way. Thank you.
It's, it's a good one.
Job, and the write-up is fantastic, and it makes a wonderful presentation for the, your detail is amazing, Darcy. And it makes a wonderful presentation for the town administrator and the finance committee. Excellent.
So I appreciate it. It was kind words. So I, I do think that, of course, sending the M-A-R one is more prudent. It's still, it's still a cut. But you can obviously see the differences in basically the list of staff, the line items. It's. It's. It keeps us open on Saturdays. Which is the important part. Do you know, it just, um, obviously, there was the idea floated around, floating around to not have support staff rather than make the expense cuts. But the support staff obviously keep the place going. Um, I think it's very important to do it in a different way. Um, so you can see what I wrote with both scenarios. One is what I was initially asked to cut and one is the M A R, which is still a cut. And it just makes, makes certain that we're not disproportionately cut to the other departments. Because M B L C, they're not going to see, you know, they're not going to take into consideration, oh, this department has, um, the, 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 you, the union contracts and this department has this that they have to do. They are going to look at each department's numbers and say, this is a disproportionate. So that's why the M A R is important. But, um, as you can see, it's a, it's basically just a game of dominoes. Which is why having the M A R is important in the first place.
So you're, you're suggesting that, that, I just want to make sure I understand that that would be our, the worst-case scenario budget that you would present to the FinCom is the one, this one right here?
That's preferred, yes, because the other one.
But this is the one you're advocating.
I do, yes, that's, I do advocate, even though I did send both scenarios. Because, because the other one was what was asked. But I can't see any logical situation in which we can make it work.
No.
Good.
I think this is.
Oh, I can't either. And the thing, I mean, it's, it's, I think it is, in the infinite wisdom of the town administrator, she's asking, in the event that the school comes back with, uh, far more than the town can afford. And also, if the town doesn't vote for an override. So if all those ifs happen, then that's the place they'd have to go. And that's painful and would cut out an awful lot. Not just for us, but I mean, for every department and council on aging would have huge cuts. Every, every department would have huge cuts. But that is just the worst-case scenario, and let's hope and pray that it doesn't come to that.
Yeah, and I, I included the bit at the bottom about the other funding sources mainly because. Yes, on the letter. Because I, I know it will be floated that there are funding sources to meet the materials requirement, that we could just send ten thousand dollars to the consortium for overdrive and call it a day. But we're going to need that funding for the expenses that were cut.
Right.
Um, especially supplies which have gone up exponentially.
Got a good ten grand there anyway.
Yeah.
It's not getting funded.
Yes, exactly.
What was not getting funded, Jan? I didn't hear you. I'm sorry.
Um, I would, I'm just doing a calculation. It's a good ten thousand dollars.
I use that.
Yeah.
Um.
That we would need to supplement, you know?
Yeah.
Or some.
Right.
What I did from those is I pulled that and put it into part-time wages.
Okay. But I mean, since there's nothing there.
Pages. Yeah.
We, we're gonna have to backfill.
Exactly. So, you know, any, any programming. I mean, granted, the programming line is small anyway. But, um, the supplies line, which FinCom is generous enough to give us fifty-five hundred last year. But, you know, we don't know what this year looks, this coming year looks like exactly. Um, I would say just meaning the M A R is worst case personally. The municipal appropriation requirement, yeah.
And keeping staff.
Yes, yes, we need them to.
Can supplement this.
Yeah. We need the staff so that we can be open Saturday, so that we can ask for flexibility for the materials of all.
The letter was very well, it explained it all to me.
I'm, I'm hoping that it's understandable to the people.
I'm sure it is. I'm sure it is. They've, they've struggled over library costs for years and.
Yeah, I know.
That's one editorial change you have on the worst case, uh, we service programmer.
That was, that was implied. That was, that was.
That's.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Yes, that, that's a change. That would be the change. But if that's not the one we're submitting, then it won't, it'll be anyway.
This is worst-case scenario.
Yeah. It would literally only be programming. Remember when I wrote that it would literally be only.
That was one of those scenarios.
Yeah. It was the first one, before the M A R one was put together. There would, there would be one. There would be one written.
But we're hope, I mean, the one we're going to be pushing for is the M A R.
Yes.
Right.
It's more of a presence for that position.
Now, okay, I'm sure. So the M A R one is not.
We should say, the total is three hundred and fourteen thousand. It's that budget.
Right.
Yes.
Against the three hundred and forty-seven thousand.
Cut off. Is that making what they asked you to cut off?
No.
No, no, that's what I thought. Okay. It's more.
They asked me to cut forty-nine. From this year.
From this year.
Um, sorry, Kathy, what?
It's, it's making about thirty-five thousand if I'm, if I'm doing.
Right, right. So it's, you know, obviously, it's still a big cut for us because we're not a huge department. We don't have a huge budget.
It's just the other scenario is this.
So as, as opposed to forty-nine thousand and change, uh, we're hoping the M R I passes with about a thirty-seven thousand, thirty-five thousand dollar decrease. But that's on the twenty-twenty-four. Not the F Y twenty-twenty-five that we've submitted. That's the cut on the twenty-twenty-four existing.
Yeah, it's based on our number for this year.
For this year, not next year.
Yeah, but it would be next year's number should that go through. It's, it's, it's a rough one.
I think you did an excellent job of putting it together, a really excellent job.
No.
And explaining it.
What Kathy just said. This is, we're just voting on whether we're gonna, you're gonna submit the M A R budget.
Yes.
Yeah, the three hundred.
And you can see it's labeled worst-case M A R slash M A R, because they are the same.
Right. If the whole thing is a worst case.
The whole thing is a worst case.
I know. I make a motion that we submit the, um, worst-case scenario M A R budget.
That's.
The worst-case scenario and what?
And she said M A R.
The M A R, yes.
So it's the, this one, not the, but.
Just M A R.
Yeah, I have it labeled as worst-case slash M A R.
Right.
On the, on the spreadsheet.
I don't see worst case on my.
Oh, it's W, it says W C.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, sorry.
If I can say what you said.
Right.
W C, I know. All of these acronyms.
Actually using code words.
Hi.
Jay?
Hi.
Kathy?
Hi.
Laurel?
Hi.
Mary Lou?
Hi. Was, did somebody second that motion?
Yes.
Yes.
All right, yeah, all right.
Yes, yes.
Bob, yes.
Thank you.
Let's all pray.
I am.
To do this tomorrow.
I'm gonna do it tomorrow, possibly after I talk to Loretta. Okay. Um. So, yes.
I hope, I think the finance committee doesn't meet until later in the week, next week, I think. But it's good to get it into Rebecca as soon as possible because she's patient, she's been patient waiting for it.
Yeah, she's been very, I, I appreciate her patience. Rebecca, if you see this, thank you for your patience.
We all thank you.
Um, okay. Report. Wish that wasn't big enough. Um, any questions about the circulation statistics? I think they're on par with.
They're excellent.
Yeah, they're fantastic. Um, very on par with last February as well.
Yep.
And.
And thank you for putting that comparison up. I forget who asked for that, but it was a great idea.
Yes, yes, it definitely is. Yeah. Um. You can see that overdrive has definitely bumped up as well. But the, the in-person circ is still pretty much the same.
Yep, everything is going beautifully.
Passes went up. We did have school vacation week. Um. See.
Yeah, the passes were rough since then?
Yes. So.
It's a good way.
Yeah.
Happy you've ever seen that many in one month.
There have, there have been months, but, you know, during the winter, it's a little bit, you know, so we have some that are outside and. Um. And then programming, standout programming. You can see the Morgan Freeman one was, with, with Frank was our biggest one. That was, um, that was high.
High five, that was great.
Yeah, that one was. Was our highest number, but overall, numbers are still great. Um, any questions about those from the board? Okay, I'm gonna read the warrants. Um, twenty-four thirty-one is six thousand forty-five dollars and eighty-two cents. Twenty-four thirty-three is three hundred and eight dollars and thirty-eight cents. And the total is six thousand three hundred and fifty-four dollars and twenty cents. Oh, yeah, so Bill has been coming in this week. He, um, came in. Yesterday. No, Monday. I don't even know what day it is. He came in Monday and completed, um, handwriting, did a box, um, in terms of indexing it. He has, um, one of, he has a friend actually taking the notes for him. But hopefully, the boxes will be done in, for this part relatively soon. Um, and then he'll put everything into an Excel or Word document. And you can see what I, I, um, my idea is to put everything onto the, uh, patron computers, mainly because we have deep freeze, and nobody can delete it, even if they try.
Good, good.
Is that something, the deep freeze is something that.
It, it basically turns the computer back to how it was before it was restarted or turned off and then turned back on. Yeah.
Oh, so it's a, it's a backup that, yeah.
So.
Never be like, people can go in there and change information.
They can't change it. Um, if they try, then on a restart, it'll go back to how it was.
Okay.
So it's, it's a good way of having.
You just have to disable it to put that on.
Yes, and I know how.
Yeah, I know.
I know how.
Oh, my goodness. So is it on there now?
It is. No, no, he's, he's still putting together the, the written one. I think he still has two boxes to actually go through to hand-write index. Um, he brings his friend Michelle, and she really is the one taking the notes. Um.
That was a lot of boxes.
It's four boxes. It's only four. But lots of binders.
Stuff in there.
Lots of binders, but four boxes.
So are you just putting the index onto the computer?
Um, I think it's the easiest way to, for the, the public and for us to access it immediately. Yeah, he's typing it up.
He is, okay, because he said he was handwriting it. I'm thinking that's.
No, no, he'll type it up into, into a document.
Great. That sounds good.
Um, so, and then because of the strategic, strategic plan, which, um, notes that two staff members should be up to date on local history information. I'll be discussing with Lauren for her to be the other person. Obviously, I don't want to. Obvi, it's not in her job description, but I think it's something that would interest her, so.
That's good. She's been doing something anyway, hasn't she?
Been doing quite a bit of work from the beginning.
Oh, yeah.
Squeezing women's time off.
Yeah, I don't think it'll be too timely to be on, like, too much time. Oh, you mean the, um, the stuff in the back? Yes, she has been squeezing it. She's been making good progress this, this week.
There was so much. There was just so much.
Yes.
When we started, it's, I, I had a question, Darcy. I don't, and you've probably already thought of this before. The volunteers are the people that work for tax write-off work, uh, through the council on aging. I wonder if it would be a good idea to ask the new council on aging director if there was somebody who had a really big interest in that type of work. Uh, that would be, could be led to the library, I mean, that was going for the tax write-off, a thousand dollar or less tax write-off, that it could be kind of honed in on a skill set that would be advantageous to that type of work. Laurel, do you know anything about that?
I, yeah, I know that all of the physicians or the, um, the numbers, I feel so rude. I know that the number, uh.
They can see you when you face forward.
Oh, they could see you. I don't know.
Yeah, I see you.
Um, I know all the physicians have been taken, all filled, so I think there were forty physicians.
About many.
Oh, really?
I, I'm maybe wrong, but I thought they were forty. Um, and they're all filled as of like a couple of weeks ago. But, and I guess you would have to really find out who the people were and just put it out there to them. And I think, well, how many do you have here?
Three.
You have three. Um, I know there are a few working in the COA office doing things, but I don't know where the rest of them go. And I may be wrong.
Yeah, I wonder if, if the council aging, if the council aging director would be willing to start to look into that at some point. And, um, if we could draw someone who's very interested and has some knowledge in that, I'm sure Bill Newell would be willing to, uh, work with them.
Would just even know how to document properly.
Right.
And things.
An interest in it would be, I mean, it could be certainly dry as dust to somebody who doesn't have an interest in it. But it might open a nice door to someone who does.
I have a question. So he is documenting what was in those four boxes, which were binders.
Yes.
Saying like page one of number one is this, page two is number is this. That's what he's doing?
Um, in a, in a, in a way.
And, and what are we doing with these binders and?
There are separators between sections and the binders. So those are, I think, what is being indexed.
Indexed, okay, and then where are these binders going? Back in the boxes?
I think we have this, we, so. The, the shelves in the back, a lot of those are filled with empty archival boxes. I think we can probably fit them on there somewhere.
Okay.
Yeah, a lot of the archival boxes in the background.
That was, um, that whole room was refinished, including a new climate-controlled door. And, uh, was all done with commu-, uh, community preservation funds. Uh, I think to the tune of fifty-two thousand dollars, as I recall, uh, advocating for the grant and receiving it and working with, um, the people who built that room and the advisors. And so that's a safe place, climate-wise, for this type of thing to be kept and stored and, and, and kept forever.
Yeah, there are some photos in there, some, some old, old things like in those binders, so. Yeah, so it, it's.
And I.
It's climate control. It's a good place for it.
Yep, and Lauren was very, very helpful in ordering what we have. A good part of our temporary archival boxes to be for the filing and then to be transferred. A good part of our temporary archival boxes to be for the filing and then to be transferred to. Permanent archival boxes.
Yes.
So we've, uh, spent a lot from that grant on that.
It's a big project.
It is a huge project, Bob, yes.
If, and if anyone would like to know what she looked at today, she found the minutes from the fifties and sixties for the Mr. and Mrs. Club of Groveland. They, they're handwritten, of course, and it's just so amusing.
Have you read any of them?
Yes.
Like, what's the make of the club?
They got together and had some food and just, that's what they did. They had food and talked and there, there were a lot of, um. Fun adjectives used, some fun descriptors.
So that will be, yeah, so things like that, that's not in those boxes that, um, Mr. Newell's looking at.
No, those are in the other things.
Are they gonna be in-depth? So also, because haven't.
Yeah, I'm sure everything is eventually gonna be indexed. It's, it's, it's very fun. There are some photos.
Kind of interesting, uh, tidbit on something like that to put in your news level.
Oh, yeah.
Yes, yes.
Did you know there was?
And we have minutes in handwriting going way back to when Belle Wood was Director of the Library. Uh, it is, yeah, it's amazing, and her, uh, her agendas are all handwritten and.
Yes, they are.
Yellowed a bit by now, but it was amazing to, uh, because I worked with Lauren on that for quite some time. And, um, the things we found, Civil War records, and it, I turned all those over to Bob Guptill at the time. And so they're incorporated in his, uh, in his huge. Boxes of things, but it was amazing.
Looking at old pictures. What kids are these from Story Hours? They weren't my kids. My kids were older than that, but Deb Stevenson came, oh, there's, there, yeah, she knew all the names, so we're putting them on the back of the pictures. Absolutely crazy, but anyways. All right, and, uh.
All right, next, strategic planning. That process has started up. And we had a meeting with the consultant from MLS, Michelle Eberly. She led a really fun, fantastic meeting. Bob was there, um.
Who did you get from the public?
So CJ came.
Wood.
Uh, cause.
Yep.
Michelle said, you know, a teenager would be a good representation. I said.
Yeah.
I, I. Yes, and we had some, um, some of the volunteers, which was great. Um, there were, there were a bunch more that were kind of part of the group that couldn't make it that day. So I'll be sending them all of the exercises and then the staff will be able to do soar, which is part, one of the exercises.
That's great, because people that wanna step up and wanna do it, but can't always make the time to be at the meetings, should be kept in the loop and still be part of it.
Yes, exactly.
Excellent, excellent.
It was very helpful to have Michelle there, or here. Here, there, then. Um, so any questions about that? Survey will be coming soon too, so that'll be.
How are you gonna distribute the survey?
So, last time I did a, a Google form and that seemed to work out well.
Excellent.
Yeah, I think I'll do, I'll do that again. It's, it's easy to, easy to track.
Yes.
Does that go to Michelle too, or?
Uh. Well, she's, she's not gonna take the survey, if that's what you mean.
Oh, you're gonna do it.
Uh, it, it would go to the entirety of the population. And they fill out, you know, the reasons they use the library, et cetera, et cetera, checkboxes, things like that. Um, I would be asking them questions about the library.
Then that will go into a subsequent report.
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
So at the very end of our current strategic plan is what the survey results were last time, so if you look at it, it's at the very end. And the results are in red.
And do you have a timeline for that?
Uh, I'll have it up for a few months, and then I'll have to start writing the, the plan, so.
When will it start?
Uh. I would say within the next few weeks.
Okay.
I'll have it all put together because I've already gone over some of the details with Michelle and she had some ideas about changing some of the. The stuff. Yeah, she actually.
It's always been very helpful in guiding along that process.
Mm-hmm. Um, okay, so flooring carpet update. So it's now in April, we talk coming.
Well, we might be better off.
Yes, yes, I hear what you're saying, Kathy. Um, it, weather might be better, who knows? I mean, then again, April showers, but. Who knows?
Well, that's true.
And April vacation.
Yes, yes, one staff member wanted me to have this scheduled for April vacation, and I said, we have so much programming. We have so much programming.
Don't.
Think that's a good idea.
I know.
Um.
But when you sit down, when you meet with the carpet people and the movers, you can work those dates.
Yeah.
Hopefully.
Yes, so we'll, we'll make it work, we'll figure it out. Um, also, I did hear back from Rebecca. It's Talty Flooring in Billrica. I don't know much about them, but that's the company that did the lowest bid, so that is, I think, the company that's been.
And what's their name?
T A L T Y Flooring.
I don't know, T A L T Y.
Yeah. Salty. Um. I didn't, I was in a meeting earlier, so I didn't get a chance to talk to, um. I think Rebecca and Steve are here and also. The, the guy from Salty Flooring, um, but yeah, we'll, we'll be having a, a meeting soon.
Right.
Yeah, so last month, we had Sergeant Sandoni come and talk about. It was really kind of about mental health issues with patrons, um, what to do if. Patrons are kind of maybe experiencing a severe mental health issue while they're here at the library. Um, you know, what to call them for, what not to call them for. Um. Let's see, we also talked about the First Amendment auditors because it's always good to have a refresher on that.
The Board of Trustees should have that too.
It, it was really, uh, let them do what they want type of situ-, it was really, you know, it was.
You know the COA Board that run.
Yes, I, I remember. I, I know.
Are the rules different for the libraries? I thought.
No.
I, no, they're not. Okay, that's the same for libraries.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's just, um, you know, obviously, we should have the authorized personnel things above the doors and the staff areas if. We're concerned about that, so I have one on my door and, um, I think it's in different places, so. Um.
Isn't there something with children too? If there are children in the library?
They're pretty, to be, I don't know, to be honest, because they. They don't usually film kids, that's the thing.
Right, you, you'd have to have the parents' permission to film, so that's a way that.
They usually don't.
I did do a training online.
Yeah.
Massachusetts.
Yeah, I think they, they're very. They're, they're very. Intense rule followers, so I think they.
They would make sure not.
Would be pretty respectful about that. Um. See.
If there is training, if you want, online, um. From Massachusetts for how to, I mean, you'd have to Google, I don't know the website, but you Google it, you know, First Amendment Training or something like that. First Amendment Rights Training, very, very interesting.
Um, there's also the additional one that I mentioned in the next paragraph. So multiple dates of this are full. I do have some staff signed up for it, including myself. Um. But some of them are on waitlist currently, so I'm gonna try to talk to the, um, the staff member at MLS who is running these. We don't have enough staff to actually have an individual session, so I'd be inviting some board members to this.
That's fine.
Yeah, or also even combining with another, what?
Would it be, is it only applicable to libraries or do you tell most staff anything?
I don't know, I mean, it's, it's, the, the person running it is an MLS.
Yeah, no, I understand.
So I'm not really sure. I have to look more in depth and maybe talk to her about that, but. It might be library-specific, but I'll have to see. Um.
And maybe we could combine with another library as well.
I, yeah, I was gonna say that too. Um, something that was discussed in my small library director meeting this morning was. Um, combining with close by libraries for stuff like this, so.
That'd be great.
We might be able to do something like that. Um. So I'm keeping an eye on the MLS calendar for anything else that comes up and letting staff know. What they should register for, should they be available for it.
But they, how long do they usually last?
An hour or so.
Okay.
So say Christie from MLS does come and do this. Granted, I think she might be coming from another part of the state, but, um, usually are. We have trainings during staff meetings and they are, they're at nine AM. Um, but could always figure something else out depending on. Availability for people. We, we did have the strategic planning after closing, so.
And so did staff come to that? Some staff members came?
Sue came to that.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
No, I mean, I, I wasn't.
Yeah, I, I, yeah, having a, a staff representative is always something that I have tried to do. Um. Any other questions from the board about this?
Thank you.
Thank you, Darcy.
I'll keep everyone, I'll keep everyone informed.
Okay, next up is the trustee's response. Uh, we approved it at our last meeting, uh, for the content, and then we were just looking at it for. Punctuation or grammatical changes, so we've had both. Uh, one of the changes I think we have to make is, at the beginning, we talked about, uh. Referring to the Langley Adams Library Board of Trustees as Board of Trustees throughout the report. And we messed up on changing it all through the report.
Right.
So we gotta do that change.
If I'm allowed to.
Yep, well.
Well, no, because it says here in referred to as the Board of Trustees, so she has, right, and it's inconsistent.
It says library board, library board, yeah.
Went over that and I made those corrections, but then I stopped because of those other emails.
Okay. Are you, you finish this, or you will?
I will finish it and I can make those small changes.
Thank you, Mary Lou and Nancy for doing that.
Yeah, thank you to Mary Lou. I mean, she made it much, um, clearer and more readable and.
Yeah.
Right, so, um, my question is, do we have to attach both copies when I submit the, the notes, the original and?
I think you do because the original was red.
The original one.
And that's what we voted.
Yeah, yeah.
We vote today to.
Accept a second revised copy.
Revised, yeah, we could do that.
Okay, great.
That would be the best thing to do, I would think.
Yes, I agree.
I, I think there's one change though that.
Yeah.
That I, I feel was taken out that shouldn't have been taken out. And that was.
What was that, Jan?
In, in the fourth paragraph.
In the fourth paragraph, um, posted on social media was taken out, and I feel very strongly that should go back in.
I recall that discussion during the meeting when we, um. Called public comments, public comments, covered it all.
We can, we said that covered all public, that, that was part of public comments.
But we're saying spoken and written statements.
Right. Right, these spoken, the reason why I believe it needs to go back. As it was originally written is because that was one of the things that was very difficult. For many, many people was what was posted on social media. Yes, they were written statements. Put on social media, but they weren't like written statements for one or two people. They went out to the world. And I do think that, um, it would make sense just to add that after. Spoken and written statements and posted on social media, because that was on the original one. I don't recall taking that out. I apologize if it was, but I don't recall that in the meeting.
I think we had talked about it. I don't remember the.
It's in the one I have.
Social media? Not this one.
It, it, um, it's, wait a minute, um.
In the fourth paragraph, Mary Lou.
Fourth paragraph, um. It says, um, wait a minute, I just, I had my eyes on it, so hard to pick, right, right here. Um, these statements which were spoken, written, are posted on social media, caused confusion about the facts and the timelines.
Right, but the one that, that, that you changed, that you were correcting punctuation on, that's no longer in there.
It isn't, it's up in front of me.
It's, it's not.
It's not on my copy, Mary Lou.
So I'm just asking for it to go back in.
Yeah, okay, because it's in, on this copy, I.
Okay.
How did that happen? Anyway, yeah, it's on this copy that's floating around.
Yeah, I mean, the, and the inaccuracies we weren't allowed to address, you know.
Yeah, but it's, 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 yeah, it's just, yeah, put it back in, because I mean, I'm, I'm looking at it and thinking it's right here in front of me.
Uh, uh, and I'm looking at my copy and it's right in front of me too, so, yeah, we just need to have that back in. Because that was silly.
There's been far too many drafts of this thing, that's the problem. Twelve drafts of this thing, so that's what, that's what happens to so many of them, we're probably not even looking at the same one. Yeah, we do, yeah.
And I'm reading off of has M L edits at the very end of the, um.
Oh, I don't even have that.
And she's M L.
I mean, I have a whole bunch more over here, so it's possible I've missed the one that says M L edits.
Yeah.
Good.
Uh, anyway, it's noted, so.
Anyway, Nancy can take care of it. She, she, she got it, yeah. She's on it, okay.
Then attach it to.
Yeah, we have to have attached both of them.
Both of them.
The original, not all those in between, back and forth and little up.
Yeah.
No, no, no. I don't need.
The one we read.
And could everybody, could we all have a copy of the final one?
Motion.
Yep.
Can I just ask one more question? Did Mary Lou have a question, Bob?
I do have a question. Can we all get a, can we all get a copy of the final, final draft?
Yes, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Nancy.
Get rid of all this, all these other ones, okay? Yeah, I guess, I, yeah, all right.
What we'll do is the working document, you're working.
My shredder's gonna go, you know.
On it, and the revised copy won't have the watermark.
Okay.
So we'll have two copies.
Sure. Yeah, great.
Thank you.
Repeat your motion, Laura.
I forget. Oh, I make a motion to accept the revised new response as of seven oh nine. On March thirteenth.
I second that.
Twenty-four.
Uh, yeah.
All those in favor, Jan?
Hi.
Jay?
Yes.
Kathy?
Yes.
Laurel?
Yes.
Mary Lou?
Yes.
Nancy?
Yes.
Bob, yes.
I had Kathy seconded it.
I seconded it. You're right, Nancy, I did, yeah.
Okay, cool, all right.
Next, Kathy reached out to Rebecca to, uh, request that we have, uh, some training on open item, the role of the Board of Trustees on open items. And Rebecca indicated she'd be glad to put together a document, but she needed the board's approval, uh, if we would like to have counsel come and give us an update on open meeting.
Yeah, remember it was revised.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
It's, it's open meeting law. Open meeting law and roles and responsibilities, just as a, uh, an update for everyone.
Yep, no, Kathy, can you explain, so somebody's coming to give, um, like a training?
Rebecca offered that, that that would be, you know, would, I asked her if it was possible, and she said that it would be, and I, it's, on the. She said possibly a lawyer to update us on all the new changes in open meeting law, the rules and regulations, and, um. I think that's, that's a great idea. So she said that she needs a, a vote of the board, and I think she's gonna plan it for April or beyond.
Your motion.
Motion.
Make a motion. Make a motion that we, um, have the town administrator contact someone from town council to give the trustees an updated presentation. Presentation on open meeting law, uh, and review to, and to review the role and responsibilities of the trustees. The Board of Trustees of the Langley Adams Library.
Second?
I seconded.
All those in favor, Jan?
Aye.
Jay?
Yes.
Kathy?
Aye.
Laurel?
Yes.
Mary Lou?
Yes.
Nancy?
Yes.
Bob, yes. Okay.
Eight, number eight. He doesn't have it. Discussion of email regarding exit interview.
Oh, okay, huh, I completely missed it.
That's okay.
Uh, I wonder why. Uh, this is totally, totally my fault. Uh, I did not alert the full Board of Trustees to the goings on.
Did you speak up, Bob? I can't hear you.
I'm taking the blame for not notifying the boards as to the process that happened here regarding the exit interview with, uh, Bergen. Uh, Bergen submitted her exit interview and as part of that, she indicated that uh, she was okay with, uh, two members of the board to attend to, to see the, uh, exit interviews, to attend a discussion with Rebecca on the exit interview. And those people were myself and Jan. With a lot of back and forth between myself, we were just wondering what was the purpose of this? Uh, you know, Bergen is in fact a former employee. She submitted her, uh, resignation and that would be it. However, uh, we felt that not to attend this meeting, uh, would be a mistake. It would put the Board of Trustees in a bad light because we would be unwilling to attend and participate in the exit interview. Subs- subsequent to that, Darcy has indicated that she will attend, uh, the exit interview. So a double win, the, uh, you know, the trustees and the director will attend in addition to, uh, selectmen, which I think is.
Yeah, any trustees.
We didn't discuss the trustees attending or voting.
We did not, that's, that's what I'm saying, it's my, my fault.
And we rea- we act as one entity. We work as a board, not individuals.
But, but here we are, so I created this problem and I'm looking for someone to give me guidance as to what we do.
Well, so the exit interview has been planned?
It's scheduled for tomorrow.
And who is attending?
Jan, Darcy, and as far as I know, Jason, uh, Davis, and Rebecca and Bergen.
And you?
No.
No. So kind of back, going backwards, I guess we would have to approve to have Jan as his, as a spokesperson for the board. Am I correct?
Right, I mean, she would have to be approved as a spokesperson. It, it was a board, we work as a board.
Right, so we would, that's kind of going, it should have kind of happened before.
That's exactly what I'm saying, it's gonna happen, it's gonna happen before.
So do we make, can we do this, make a motion and, I mean, we have to have it official?
Well, we don't have to have it, it's already been planned. So the board was excluded from that and, um, yeah, I don't understand. I mean, nobody's brand new in the board and why they would, yeah.
I didn't understand if that was the, within the scope of our duties as a board?
No, it's supposed to be, it's supposed to be a neutral third party, but, uh, apparently the.
Neutral.
Person calling the shots, but, but she had the right to call the shots.
But that's hardly neutral, having someone on, from the board.
Right, exactly, it is hardly neutral.
I would feel more comfortable going in with a board backup personally.
And there will be, the selectman would be a neutral person, because he doesn't know.
And the town administrator is a neutral person as well.
Right. It's just set up by the town administrator.
She's a neutral person.
Right. The town administrator set up the meeting.
Right, but the, the board works as one entity, so that, I think that's the point people are trying to make.
Right, and I understand that.
Well, I don't see any point in having a vote if, if it's gonna happen. I mean, it's, uh, been a long time. You know, we've, we've already posted the job and there's, I understand there's several applicants and, um, so if this is something that someone feels is necessary, then go for it.
Well, my feeling is if it's happening, it's happening. I would feel more comfortable if we took a vote now, a vote of confidence to say as, as a board that we would say okay for Jan to be the spokesperson, just so that we have it on record.
Or just be present, be present, be present.
I don't think this is a, 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 a listening, I don't, maybe present.
A, what's the word, a delegate, a delegate on the board.
Deserves to have somebody with her, so.
Can I have a question? Do I, can I ask a question?
Sure.
Okay, at the risk of sounding, um, I don't know. I, I, I really, I dopey, I guess, I don't know, I don't know what to say. I mean, I, I know in general, I, I get exit interview, but, um, like, why, why do you have an exit interview? I guess that's what I don't, that's what I don't understand. I mean, if you, if you, if you've resigned, why do you have an exit interview?
And resign, it gives a notice and one hour later be gone. I, I don't, yeah.
Oh, I would say the form should serve as the exit interview. That's what its intended purpose is. This is a follow-up.
So that's what I'm saying, going through this, this process of all these people coming in, what's the point? If, if nothing can be resolved by it, what's the point?
Well, I think it's town protocol now.
Everybody.
Well, the form, the form is town protocol. The, um, the, the, the form is town protocol. And, um, yeah, that's, that's the town protocol.
It's a new form too, I believe.
Yeah, and it, does it require a meeting? Does the form require a follow-up meeting?
No, it offers, it offers the opportunity.
Uh, the office, the opportunity, okay, so who, and who gets to choose? Does the town get to choose or does the, the person who resigned get to choo-? Who gets to choose?
The person who's resigning gets to choose.
The person resigning gets to choose whether to have it, okay.
I, I believe so, yeah.
I just didn't, I just, I, you know, you, you just let terms go and I just, okay, thank you. Now I, I get it, okay.
I appreciate it as a, a town function that that's what they decide to do. My, my question was the board's participation, but you've answered that, so.
Yeah.
Satisfied.
So if you want, if, if people are more comfortable with a vote, saying that Jan can represent the board and to be there as a representative of the board.
I don't, I just.
Then.
We're covering that, but that way. I, I totally, I totally agree. How do you feel, Darcy, for allowing a vote?
I think it's prudent.
Yeah, I do too. So.
Then I make a motion too.
I made a motion, you can second it.
You made the motion, I'm sorry. I seconded, I'm sorry, Laura.
And we seconded and then had the discussion, but we had the discussion and now we're seconding, so.
Okay, yeah.
So moving on, we have had several, um.
We have to vote.
Dan?
Oh, I'm sorry, you forgot.
Jay?
Aye.
Kathy?
Aye.
Laurel?
Yes.
Mary Lou?
Yes.
Nancy?
Yes.
Bob, yes.
Okay. Old business.
Old business. Uh, one thing I wanted to bring up is the fact that, uh, Mary Lou is not running for office this year. And I want to remind everyone that we're in, I don't want to say desperate, but I will say desperately to have a replacement as the treasurer function. It's a critical function and we really can operate without them.
And she's not going to leave until the end of May, I'm sorry, end of June.
Right.
When, when is the election? When, when is the election, Laura?
Anyone jumping up and down saying, I want to be treasurer?
No, well, before that, we need to have the position, okay, so if anyone out there is interested in, you know, being elected for it, to be a trustee on the library Board of Trustees. Um, you can take out papers now, but you have to have them in by Monday. It's five or six PM.
Five o'clock, it's five o'clock, Laura.
So you, you, you need to get single, this, yes, you would need to get the signatures.
Have to have at least thirty-four signatures.
Oh, I thought you said thirty-five. Okay, well, anyway, yeah, I have.
Thirty-four or thirty-five. It's always good to get a couple of extra in case somebody signs that's not registered to vote.
Right, and, um, so that's that, so that's to fill that position.
Not the treasurer, but a.
No, and then I, my suggestion would be that whoever is going to be treasurer be someone, not a new person who's never, you know, been on. Um, and that, that position, treasurer's position has to be bonded. Um, so the person should have a good credit rating.
But we don't want to make it, I, I hope. I, we don't want to make it that somebody has to come on the board and automatically right away be treasurer, that would be unfair.
That's what laws, so.
Yeah, yeah.
I, I have an, I have another question.
Yes.
Yes, um, when is the town election?
I think it's May fifth, is it?
Oh, May fifth, yeah, April.
May fifth, yeah, so my next, my last meeting is going to be the April meeting because I can't officially be on the board after that election. I will not be a trustee anymore.
Right, the, the new.
So, I mean, my, I'm gonna have one more meeting, the April meeting, and then I'm, that's it.
When is the election, Jim?
Like, the first Monday.
May fifth.
May fifth, yeah.
Till the end of the fiscal year.
No, no.
No, no, I, I, I can't, I'm not a trustee, as, as soon as that election's over. Because I would have had to run again.
It's not on the agenda.
Yeah, and I want to. Just because there's people on this, just because there are people on this meeting that aren't usually here, I want to let everybody know that I let Lee Thomas know this a whole year ago, that I wasn't planning to run again and suggested he get a treasurer. And he refused to do it and that's, you know, and, uh, so I mean, I didn't just do this on short notice. I, I've known for the past year that I was not intending to run again, so, so everybody knows that, just.
Darcy, can I ask one thing? I've completely lost my screen thing. Can you guide me back to it? Nothing is coming up. I'm hearing, but I'm not seeing.
Point of information? I'd like to raise a point of information to the board, to the chair.
Bob?
It, it, there's no, there's no, there's no public comment.
No.
A point of information could be made by anybody and my question was going to be if you are going to allow public comment.
There is no public comment on this agenda, no.
So, any point can be raised by anybody at any point, Robert's rules.
Uh, Darcy, could you guide me back to the pictures?
She has, she's out of, look, the email, she's getting a new email.
Oh, that's what you mean?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, yeah.
I have a question if everyone here wants to remain, like, do you want to remain chair? I mean, we have to have those elections due, because maybe someone who is chair.
Just give me one second to get back on, I'm having a hard time.
You know?
Can we put it on the agenda for next, yeah, next month?
Yeah, put it on the agenda.
Train whoever wants to be treasurer too, so. Right, that's true. I mean, there's gonna be a lot of changes with. And the bonding has to happen.
Right, that, does that take about a month, I think?
That will, yeah, that will come, but then the person will have to fill out paperwork and, because they do a credit check on you. Um, so you have to fill out paperwork initially for that bond.
And that determines the cost of the bonding.
Yes, it does, yeah.
And somebody was talking, I didn't see anything here, I just.
We don't have anybody on.
Is it me, is it me, Darcy, or?
No, I reset you the link so that you can click on it.
Okay, let me go back and try it again. Really not up to par this time of this month. Here we go.
Yeah.
Well, it's the other, is there other, which I don't think.
Yeah, we have other.
Here we are, here we are, thank you. And, and somebody spoke and I didn't hear, I don't know who it was, they didn't identify themselves, so I have, uh, no idea.
Okay, next on the agenda is other. Anyone want to add anything? Okay, not hearing anything? Do I have a?
Yeah, I, I didn't hear about the treasurer. We're gonna put that on the agenda for next month. Is that what you said, Bob?
Oh, the treasurer, we're, we're gonna talk next year, next month. We're gonna talk next month about all the positions.
Yeah, the voting.
Because maybe.
Oh, I see, okay, yes.
So chairman may want to be treasurer or secretary maybe, you know, may switch around.
Right.
The chairman would make a great treasurer.
I want to thank Laura for helping with the three hours. Oh, thank you. It's been fun, yeah, thank you so much.
It has been fun.
Well, I've only done one.
Oh.
But you have one tomorrow, right? And I have one tomorrow. Supposed to be, um, preschool and pre-K and I have four two-year-olds, show up.
They're so cute.
That's great. I, I do, can I just ask one question? Somebody, when I was completely off this, somebody, I don't know if it was a board member or a member of the public, raised a question. I couldn't see who it was, um, I.
This Adriana, um, Woods.
Oh. Yeah.
You can't point it forward.
Bo- Bob, is there, is there no public comment? Is that what you?
Correct.
Okay.
Motion to adjourn?
Oh, oh, I, I do have one question under other.
Go ahead.
How are we gonna present the determination of the board?
The letter, the response.
Okay. And that will go to?
It would be part of the meetings. One will go as a public request to. So do we meet the ten-day turnaround time for that public request?
Right, ten days you have to respond, yes.
And then, and then I'll send it over to the town so it, it'll be posted with the minutes.
Yep.
Like it.
Excellent, okay. And have we agreed to pu- to also include, uh, the director's comments with that or was that included to be posted with last month's, or last week's comments?
That would be posted with last week's.
I see, thank you, Nancy. Thank you.
Which we approved, so it'll be attached.
Yes, yes, okay, good. Excellent. Just want to be very clear on all of this so that there's no questions uh, before. And is there any, there's no opportunity for public comment, am I correct?
Yes.
Correct.
Thank you.
Motion to adjourn?
Make a motion to adjourn, so I did that.
Second? All those in favor, Jan?
Aye.
Jay?
Aye.
Kathy?
Aye.
Laurel?
Aye.
Mary Lou?
Aye.
Nancy?
Yes.
Bob, yes.